If we could talk a little loud.
Yeah, just as a point of order, everything is mic'd really well to the video recorder.
Mm-hmm.
But inside the room, I cannot hear. That's why I don't ever come too near.
And I have low hearing too on some voices and sounds and stuff too.
Well, I'll be doing most of the talking and I'm really loud.
If we could someday mic the room.
Oh, good.
Yeah. At some point, we will.
That'd be cool.
Okay, tonight, we have a meeting with downtown folks.
I'm kinda disappointed. I thought there would be more people.
Did we have a change in the time that we didn't know about?
It's the same time that was on the postcard.
I didn't get a postcard.
We got a postcard that said six.
I didn't get a postcard. I'm not only a businessman, but a proprietor. No postcard.
I didn't get a postcard.
Don't know how that works.
The postcard said six o'clock.
Property, we took it right off the tax maps. If the postcard said six o'clock, the ones that...
Right.
It's five.
It's five.
But it was changed to five and rather, the postcard said six.
No, then it should be what the postcard says it is.
Well, we got an email that said if the time has been changed to five.
Oh, I didn't get an email either.
Yeah, we got the email from...
We might have to do this again.
No, or we wait till six?
No, no, absolutely not.
Okay, I can do two, I can do two renditions then. How's that?
No, no, let's just...
Do you remember me calling you and saying, or no, I emailed you and saying, we have a double booked or else maybe...
No, it's the same. We run it at the night of the select board meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, anyway. So, I have some information for you relative to the letter that was given to us. For a few things to go over. First of all, there's some paving going on with the state that you're gonna need to know about. Good news and bad news. Friendship and Main are not gonna be paved this year. They're gonna be paved in 2019. In the meantime, they're gonna do a lot of the ditch work that needs to be done. So, the ditch work will be done this year. That's probably not going to impact the downtown area. It's more on friendship. So, just be aware of that.
Right.
What will impact you is the repaving of Route One, which we do not have dates for yet. There's a pre-con meeting on the 24th of June. So, sometime in July and August, it will be paved. But it will be paved at night and it will not, it will be Monday, Sunday night through Thursday. So, no Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. And it will be, but obviously, the route around paving Route One is right down Main Street. So, but I just wanted to let you know about the traffic. And art walk, we try to avoid doing anything during art walks because we learned, at least I learned last year to try to avoid that.
Old Route One?
No, Route One is going to be repaved.
US One.
US One is going to be repaved.
Right.
So, which also brings me to a couple of other things on this letter that was originally given to us, which was directional signage for Jefferson Street. They are going to redesign that and put better signage so that you know what you're doing at Jefferson Street. They are also going to... Moody's is going to be reworked. People may not like how it's reworked, but that intersection up there is going to be reworked.
So, there'll be a turning light?
Probably not a turning light. I don't know exactly what it's going to be, but I'll probably find out at the pre-con meeting. But I talked to the traffic engineer actually today and they are still working on it. It might be adding another lane, which I don't know how they would accomplish, but they're going to be doing that. We are going to be getting, they will be overlaying the bricks and the bricks will not be back. So, the brick, the stamped bricks...
In the medians?
In the medians are not staying, because that would become now a cost to the town. And they found that people got confused by them. They weren't sure if they should drive on them or not. So, what they thought originally was a great idea, and I can tell you, being from away, the first time that I encountered those, I wasn't sure if that meant stay off of them or go on them. So... So, we did talk about traffic reduction, speeding, and excessive vehicle noise. So, here, I know Charlotte, this is near and dear to your heart. The speed is set by the state. Enforcement for us is somewhat difficult with the number of police officers we have during the day, because most of the service calls occur during the day, which is when most of the traffic occurs. The issue with the noise, the vehicles are the hills. And also, if you really feel like a motorcycle is extremely loud, you need a decibel reader. You know, that's a state police matter. So, that's something, if you feel that something is excessively loud, you're gonna need to call the police department, because there's no way for us here to really, we don't have the equipment and we don't have the certified personnel to enforce anything with the noise of the engines.
So, we need to call the state police?
You can call the state police, but your best, the best thing you can do is call locally first.
Okay, we got the license plate.
You can get the license plate, but I would definitely call our police department first. And honestly...
Would it be helpful if we gave the police department the license plate?
It would be helpful if you gave the police department the license plate. Now, I know there was a request too that we ban trucks down Friendship. I, and because it was asked, I asked and after the guy got done chuckling at me.
Who wanted to ban trucks, for heaven's sake?
I, I, I remember the question was asked in an email. I don't remember who exactly, but, so, we can't, it's a state road. You know, we're always, we can't cut off access...
Yeah, that's ridiculous.
For large vehicles. How they park on Friendship Street and that might be something that, you know, because apparently, there's been issues when like the restaurant trucks are unloading or something. I have never seen that myself, but, so that's something that we might be able to address.
That's not so bad as it used to be. It's better than it used to be. You might be thinking of a thing that I've mentioned a number of times. I know we've talked about it, Bob. When the tractor trailers come from Friendship, the really big ones, and they have to stop at the intersection and then they have to make a right turn upgrade. Their cab swings out across the oncoming lane...
Right.
And into the parking spaces on the opposite side of the street.
Right. Well, and that's one of the things that was discussed. And also, apparently, at one point, there was parking spaces that were removed and then put back. I think the state's looking at removing two of those parking spaces again because of site issues.
I thought, sorry to interrupt, but I thought those parking places that were removed prohibited trucks because they blocked the view. But they do allow passenger vehicles to park there.
I remember, I remember the incident. There are two spaces in front of my business. The one closer to the intersection was removed.
But not really.
People ignored it and parked there anyway. And now I see the striping is back, so it's...
So, that's one of those. And the other one is on the other side. So, if you're coming up to turn onto Jefferson Street from, towards, well, if you're going away from the river, there's a black Ford...
That's right.
Parked there. Oh, I'm sorry, that's stuck in my throat a little bit.
It was a typo, wasn't it? Yeah.
So, it's, it's, it can be, if somebody is waiting and you have to turn, it can be, it can be a little tight.
You can't even make a turn coming out of Glidden Street, because if there's a car in front of the library or in front of the customs house, you can't see oncoming traffic.
Right. So, so they are gonna look at that, which they should've done last year when they repainted the lines, but that's, you know, we're dealing with the state. So, those, so, I do think though, that we finally have with Dave and with Doug at the state now, I think they're really good, because they did call us in February about some of these construction projects, because in February, it was planned to be repaved. And they did say, what times of the year would you like to avoid? And I said, get it done before art walk.
Yeah, my name's Mary Mabry and I'm one of the artists here in town. And I was on the pedestrian committee a couple of years ago. And one of the recommendations we voted on was to put a stop sign at that intersection so that pedestrians could cross, because you can't really see people coming down the hill or up the hill until you're right in the middle of the road. And most people aren't going 25 miles an hour, so...
No, they're not.
We wanted a stop sign at that, a four-way stop at that intersection. So, do you know anything about that?
I have never heard that. I can ask them.
Yeah, it's in the report. It's in the pedestrian committee report that we did a couple of years ago.
Yeah, the state, that's up to the state. That's not, I mean, we can ask them, but that's up to the state.
That might be a little difficult in the wintertime, because if you have to stop in the, in the snow on the ground, you're not gonna make that hill. And if you're going down the hill, you're gonna slide right through it anyways. So, we...
Yeah, I will ask and find out.
If we could get back to the speeding enforcement, the speed limit enforcement. As I drive around toward Thomason and toward Damariscotta, I see these little wagons that...
We're not doing wagons. We're gonna do the speed limit signs on that flash and read the speed.
They tell you how long, how fast you're actually going?
Yes, but they're on a signpost. They're much cheaper than the wagons, easier for everybody to put out.
Where's that gonna go?
They're movable.
Okay.
So, we put money for two in the budget.
That's great. When will we see those?
Sometime after July 1st.
Okay, excellent.
And after they put it in front of my house first.
Where's your house? Why the mud?
She lives out in the weeds.
No, it isn't.
Parking, we are in nego, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Parking, we are in negotiations with owner of several parking spaces downtown. And we are trying to find a grant that would fund that purchase of the parking area.
Excellent.
Behind the pharmacy for public parking.
Do you know how many spaces are there?
I, you know, I do, but I don't. I did, and it's in here. It's just getting it out to you isn't working tonight.
Anyway, I'm glad, I'm really glad to hear about those, those speed indicators. That's, that's...
Because we, we just don't have, most, like I said, most of our service calls are during the day. We have two officers on during the day. And it's, there's a lot that goes on that people don't realize in Waldorbar.
But how can we get them to slow down on Jefferson? Because, you know...
You know, and I'm gonna be really honest...
Put two bumps in the middle of the road.
He has one right now.
I mean, going like this, it's not working.
I will tell you something. I try to be very...
She does that, you should see what they signal back to her.
Well, I'm sure. And I try to be very vigilant of my speed and I find that I speed down Jefferson Street. Like, I find, like, when I'm at the crest of the hill coming towards One, I'm, I'm doing the speed limit. And then somehow, I hit that hill and I just fly.
See, but the whole thing is, like, right in front of my place, okay, I go across the street and inevitably, there's a car. You know, I got the river rushing in the background and I'm trying to cycle through the river or is it a car? Because it's like, they just come rushing up that hill. And I swear to God, one day, I'm just gonna get hit. And then coming the other way, it's not as bad.
The state, you know, I asked about traffic calming measures, because I was thinking maybe speed bumps aren't near as...
I don't think that would do it, because they...
I think those indicators are gonna help a lot.
I will tell you, what happens with, being from a community that tried speed bumps, it is worse than speeding, because you hear dum dum dum, dum dum dum, dum dum dum. But that's not something they're even remotely open to. So, it would have to be some type, and that's part of what we were hoping the signs would be good for. And honestly, we are doing more enforcement than we've done and it's not having an effect like we would hope. And, and honestly, at least from the people occasionally, when I have been, you know, noticing traffic on Jefferson Street, a lot of them are people I know that are speeding, so...
They're just not aware. You know, I think that those, those lighted signs are gonna...
The lighted signs really, I mean, I would say of all the things in my long career that I've tried with my police departments, that has been the most successful, because it just makes people aware of it, you know?
How much do those things cost?
Thirty-five hundred dollars a pop.
I'm getting one for my house.
So, are you just gonna do that on Jefferson or what about Main Street?
Well, that, they're movable.
Okay.
They're just like, they're just like a speed sign. It's like a...
It's gonna be a surprise.
But it, it, right, you're never, you don't tell people where it is normally, but, and there's, you know, there's not really any enforcement you can do with it, but it, it's something that does seem to help. So...
What about if you reduce the speed limit on all four of the, you know, as from 25?
They are already as low as they will go at the state level.
You can't even put your foot on the gas to do 25. This is, let's make it five. No. I have a question though, in regard to the Jefferson off of One, Jefferson off of One. Yeah, calm down there, baby. Jefferson off of One, there's no street sign. It doesn't say Jefferson at all off of One. Other side of the street says Depot, but it doesn't say Jefferson to point off of One.
True.
True. I will, I, I...
It does, it does on Main Street, but...
There used to be one. I will figure that out. I've never noticed that.
It's in some teenager's room.
That's right.
But, yeah, because, you know, somebody's, I'm on Jefferson. I'm spending hundreds of dollars to advertise and people can't find Jefferson, because it's not marked, so...
Gotcha.
Not particularly about Jefferson speeding. Most speeding is what you... Bob brought up last year when they redid the drainage ditches along Old Main Street, or Main Street, Old Route One. Particularly, they, they did a nice job making the shoulders on the north side of the road repaved and smooth. They were all broken up. For example, across from the parking lot of the post office in front of my house. Bob asked a maybe rhetorical question. Why in the world didn't we put curbing in at that point?
It wasn't rhetorical.
It wasn't rhetorical.
It was not rhetorical.
I just wanted to report, half of the grass they put in there so well and seeded and it's gone. It's just dirt.
Right, because people are turning.
Because they turn and they creep up. And they actually park on the lawn, the little moat park in front of my house.
And we actually discussed that with the state and, and that is one of those things that we put in a request that when they, before they repaved, that they at least put in that section there.
Yep. And they're likely to.
They are, have not told me that they're likely to, but I'll know more about that as we get into 2019.
Okay, so next year or something?
Well, bear in mind that their 2019 budget, when did your state 2019 budget start? Is that January or Ju, or July 1st? Yeah, so I'll probably know in the fall. So, we'll have a much better idea then.
I think it would also help with the visible village. It makes it nicer and neater when you have curves. It makes it more attractive. It's like light poles that are cast out with nice lights in them or something.
The other issue that was brought up were trash receptacles at the picnic area, which there are trash receptacles at the picnic area. I guess more were requested and in other areas of the town. One of the things that we're starting this year after Memorial Day is that there will be like trash receptacles now down at Marine Park, for example. But the town is going to contract with one of the haulers to empty those. And we'll see how often that has to be done. Just because with public works, it would be extremely, with everything that they're already doing, it would be very time consuming. So, that's something that we're going to look into also.
I want to ask you one thing about when you were talking about the signage. At the end of Jefferson Street, I was always curious why there isn't a sign that says Waldorbor Center?
It's right in front of Irving's.
I never even saw it.
There's a historic sign in front of Irving's. It's brown and white and it's very hard to see and it points that way.
What I'm saying is, if you're coming from, some people may come from the south. And they have no, you know, unless you know that Jefferson Street is going to lead you to the businesses and the art walk, you're not gonna come down there. You're gonna go all the way up to Moody's, which is crazy.
They do tend to direct people from the south side of Old Route One. There, I think there is a sign that says Waldorbor Village. So, they encourage them to come down Old Route One instead of come down Route One. But your point is, is well taken.
But there's no sign right at that road. Come right here.
It would be nice if there were one.
You know, and you need that. The other thing is, if you're coming from the other direction and you don't wanna make that turn at Moody's, particularly in the summer where you have to wait 10 minutes to get through the line, frequently, we will come down to Jefferson and make the left there.
Yeah.
So, in other words, there's two entrances to the business district. And both of those entrances contain art galleries, which brings business to the town. So, if those entrances are not well marked with nice signs, maybe a better sign than just a traffic sign. Maybe it could be only during the season, whatever, so that the town will approve it. But if we're building up this art thing, which we are, we're now up to 12 businesses that are associated with it.
Arts district.
Yeah, exactly, something. But maybe you would have something artsy on that sign too, so that it isn't just a traffic sign. It's, wow, look at this.
Could it be a piece of sculpture that someone could put together?
It could be. It could be revolving.
Robert Indiana Sculpture, that's art.
Yeah.
Love the center.
The next thing that I was hoping for feedback on too was, how was snow removal this year?
Not great, especially on the currents. They would plow the road, but on the curb, we're, we're right on Friendship, right smack in the middle between the pharmacy and Jan. And we could not get off the curb into the street, because they, the, the snow was a foot and sometimes higher. And then as it started to melt, it was literally a lake. So, it wasn't good. It was awful.
Very slushy. And...
The parking spaces along...
Well, and they can't, right, and they can't plow them, because they can't get to them, because people are parking there.
Yeah, right. But I know, I realize that was difficult for them, but it was...
Yeah, it is, it is, that's a difficult thing, because...
It's better though.
But I think, I've noticed that after a day or so, it gets cleared out. I think they try to do it at night maybe or something.
They do, but it is, it is a complicated, that was one of the biggest complaints I got, was that can, can we ban parking so that it can be cleared all the way to the curb?
Could that be something after we possibly acquire the back parking lot?
That could be.
The problem is it's difficult. If you were in one of the businesses, you could park in that parking lot, but you can't walk up the hill, because it is an ice sheet.
Right. And that's part of...
Winter Maine. Get used to it. Get used to it.
Okay.
A little warm rain will take care of that.
But we...
Twenty-two below for five days this winter, yes.
But we had, one of the things that is new is, if you've seen Blaine out in the, I call it the...
Snowblower.
Well, yeah, it's the snow blower.
I love watching him.
Yeah, that's...
Does it 10 times faster than what it used to be done.
And it saved a lot of, lot of man hours so that we can devote it to other things. So, that's, that's been helpful. But I, I just, that's one of those things that we definitely have to work on. And this year, actually, the select board and the budget committee put in for more salt too for the roads, because we were, the budget had been cut so much for that, that there were some issues over the winter where we, you know, we really should be putting a little bit more down, because of, like you said, when it's that cold, you, you can't help but have ice. You know, so when it does warm up to at least 23 degrees, when salt works, you have to have the salt to put down, so...
But I, I just want to say how much better the snow removal is now than it was like five years ago. I agree. I think it's much better. It's not perfect, but it's better.
I agree with Charlotte. Having lived in, in town, where we do, that it's significantly better. And that little sidewalk machine is very helpful for someone who walks into town.
Everybody walks.
I don't have to walk in the road all the time now, and that's very nice. The other thing is downtown, there is a spot between where the sidewalk is plowed and the street is. And there are telephone poles and things right there, so they can't really do that. You know, that plow can't do it. But I have seen downtown merchants shovel walking areas through there. And Jeff Heard does it regularly.
Jeff does it regularly.
I see Jeff cleaning up in, in front of lots of places. So, I mean, that's, I think that's one of those things that we just all have to do.
We were astounded not only by the snow plowing, having come from Warren, but as this, after the snow went, I had six inches of compost. We live on Glidden Street, all along the curb on Glidden Street. And the next thing I know, the truck and the crew come down and they sweep the streets. I mean, it's like living in a fantastic little community.
I love to hear that. That's my Johnny DeGle.
What about, I got a question. What about the crosswalks? We need those crosswalks repainted. They're so dangerous. There should be, there were ones at the intersection of Jefferson and Main, then right in front of our gallery to the Sproul entrance, and then at the end near Jeff's. And that's beautiful. As you look down the street, you can see the three places where you can cross, because it's very busy in the summer. They're gone. The streets are black.
They just did the yellow stripes today.
They just did the yellow stripes. That is something that they're supposed to be doing, but they did just to...
I have another thing about that. A problem that we have with the, with the stripes, with the crosswalks, is that if we don't get all the winter sand up before they paint, this driving across drags the sand and it wears, wears the stripes right, right off in like a couple of weeks. So, I've, I have gone out and it's taken me like 10 days with a push broom to get all the sand and gravel out of the intersection. And that was good, but I can't do that. Somebody, but somebody needs to clean that sand up, because that's what grinds the paint up. It all washes down and right to the corner of the Sproul block there.
Yeah, I had, I wanted to go back to the snow and the ice climbing up from the parking lot round back that we're hoping someday to buy. We have a set of stairs as well that goes from the parking lot on up to Friendship Street, down where Jeff is.
Yeah, on the other side.
That's right. And that leads right from the parking lot on up. If we had really good steps in there with a railing, it would be easier for people to get up there than it would be to walk up the sidewalk along Main Street.
We had a few events during the winter and it seemed like we attracted the snowstorms every time.
Something other communities have done as well, is when you have a hill like that, you do create levels, plateaus that take you up. So, it's stepped. I don't know if that can be engineered or not, but those are two other options one could consider. And one more point on the sidewalks and the crosswalk, did we get a letter of request from the library asking that that be moved to a more reasonable location?
We did, and John, if John's here tonight at 6, I'm sure he'll address that. There was a specific reason for that.
Okay. What, what are you talking about?
There's a, there's a crosswalk from the library to the post office. And to access that crosswalk, you walk out of the library, you go right down the right side of the, the library entryway. And then you have to cross to go to a crosswalk that goes across the street and ends up into nothing but a piece of lawn. Mailbox.
A mailbox.
It, it makes absolutely no sense ergonomically to have a crosswalk there.
Right, but I, I guess that was a request from the post office. It's, there's, I, some history on that.
I'm sure there is.
Yeah, it doesn't, to me, make much sense, but there is history on that, so...
In the winter, you can't.
Maybe we could get together with Gary and have her talk about it.
Well, we'll, we'll talk with the state about it.
Oh, okay.
There's one more area that I'd like to see addressed too, and that is right where those stairs come down, you know, with all those cars parked there. That needs to be pushed in a little bit.
Well, that's private property right now.
Oh, yeah. I, I, that's, that's a very good point. Some cars can fit in there, but some truck in there.
Right, but that's private property at the moment.
Somebody parks there with a, with a, with a...
Oh, you mean the steps come down on Jefferson Street or in the parking lot?
Jefferson.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes. Okay. I'm sorry, I know. Okay, I thought you were back on the parking lot. Sorry.
There's some like extended trucks with trailer hitches and they're against the traffic.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, that needs to be addressed.
Well, stop it.
There's a parking lot right down behind Taction.
Really?
Yeah, the Taction building provided, we had to park down back.
So, there are some exciting things going on that I thought we better share. And one of them is we are going to be doing LED street lighting in town. So, at least for the downtown district, we're going to have historic arms put up. And, you know, the, the dream... That was good. The, the, the dream is also to have some type of planter hanger also, so that at some point, we could have planters downtown that hang. Unfortunately, with that goes somebody to water them. So, you know, anytime we, we think we want to do something like that, there's always something else that has to...
How do those planters in Rockland get watered?
They have a pickup truck with a gentleman who stands on the back of them. And they pump water out of a tank in the back of a truck. That is how they do it. Probably not OSHA approved, but that's okay. In New Jersey, you get shot for that, but in Maine, you're all good. So, that's how they do it there. At least that's what I've seen. And I've seen that, Damariscotta, I know some of the merchants take care of them. But, I mean, that, I think that, I mean, I love the flags myself. That's a personal thing. I think that that's really... I think that that's really added a lot to the downtown area, um, you know. I think that that's just a showing of there's some vibrancy there. I mean, every comment but one has been very positive about that, so that's been great. Um, you know, we're excited about that. Um, so the LED streetlights are coming, and they're not like you think, the LED streetlights that make you look really bad at home.
No, I'm thinking blue.
Yeah, no, not those. It, it, we want the warm glowing ones. Um, and at some point, we will have three demonstration lights up here so that people can see. So that's, that's, that to me is exciting. Um, I'm actually have a meeting with the sprawl block tomorrow morning um, to discuss potential commercial space on the, like, closing the bottom in and making it look more like a, um, what it used to be, I guess, before it became so bland, you know, awnings or things. I, 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 that's, the owner of Sprawl Block, that's all his decisions, but, um, we are meeting with them and having discussions, so you might see some changes there. But, you know, awnings on that building would make a world of difference, you know, just something to dress it up.
Do you know the ones I made?
Yeah, I do know the ones you mean, but until I get there, I, I mean, that's really the owner's, um, call on who designs it and what they go.
Part of the deal when they built it, that it could be. I'm not positive, but Steve Cartwright had the plans. We had seen them at one time. And I thought he had said that it was part of the deal when they put that new sprawl block in, that when John Morris designed it, that was part of the deal with the folks who built it.
It might have been, but all of that is all dependent on, um, talking to Main Housing and getting approval from them. So, there's a lot of moving parts to this. We're in very preliminary stages, so.
Talking about putting businesses in there, under those awnings?
Well, closing in the bottom and, but there's a lot of parameters that go with it. They would have to be businesses that cater to the community that lives there. So, a barber shop, or a chiropractor's office, or a doctor's office, or something like that. Um, because it has to, there's a, there's a formula you have to use that, when you have, um, that type of funding for that type of housing that you would have to have. So there's a lot of hoops to jump through. It's just something that's being chatted about and talked about.
Bottom floor at the moment, you know, when you go inside.
Is a community center.
Oh, it's a community center?
Right. Currently, it's a community center.
Because someone said to me a while ago that, um, the original plan included shops when they were rebuilding it.
It, well, it may have, but then when it turned to, I guess, and got certain types of funding, I, I don't know, I wasn't here then, but, but from my understanding was that, um, any type of change in its use has to go before Main Housing. Um, and we have a volunteer person in town who's looking, who has looked into that. But we do know that the commercial space, no matter what, has to be somehow tied into, um, the community that lives there.
But not necessarily the residents.
The residents that live there.
The residents.
Just them, okay.
Yeah.
But, but it's not exclusively for their use.
No, not exclusively, but it has to have something tied to them, so it would have to be a service. It couldn't be a, um.
Probably an art gallery.
Probably not.
Well, it could be an art gallery if they were involved with it.
Right, a small bodega, uh, you know, things like that, so, but it has to have some type of a component.
I have a question.
Yours services the community.
I have a question about streetlights. I love the dark skies here. I'm an astronomer. I'm always fighting against light trespass, and I wanted to make sure that the new streetlights have horizontal cutoff and don't light up my property, you know, just light up the street. And don't light up the underbelly of airplanes.
Right, well, I don't, I don't think they're going to be lighting up under, underbellies of airplanes. But one of the neat things about this technology is that a lot of it can be, um, and our EDC saw the presentation, it can be controlled. Um, so it, I mean, and they can get dimmer as the light comes. I mean, there's a lot we can do with it, so that technology. And I think when we get closer, we will have some type of a large meeting where we can chat about all of those things.
Because they can control where it. By, by the right font on it.
Right. And, I mean, with a more historic light, I think you'll, you'll have that anyway. Um, it's not going to look like, you know, I, I mean, in other sections of town, they probably won't be historic because there is a bit of a cost to that, but, um, you, you should, it should be something that you enjoy.
When you say historic, what do you mean?
A historic period type lighting more so than just the bland arm. I, I don't know yet. There's only about four choices we have. We're just, like, we're just starting out, but I promise you, it will look appropriate for the town. It won't look New Jersey. Might be a clamshell, no.
I think New Jersey looks great.
Parts of it.
Not all of it.
Did you have something, Bob?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to embellish a little bit of what Julie has said. If they engineer this for us, uh, according to plan, they will have more light in some areas where we need it in the wintertime, for example, to move stone, uh, snow, or whether you have to have better visibility for police patrolling. But then where your residential areas are perhaps, there won't be as much light, and they can control, they can control that.
It's all, it's just really cool technology. Um, couple of other things, um, that we were planning, um, on the property next to Pine Street Landing, um, to have a lovely little educational center and walking park, which was going to be part of our original trail around the downtown river area. Unfortunately, um, the owner of that property that we had received the grant for backed out. Um, we are though proceeding and will be, we awarded the contract to Farley and Sons for Pine Street Landing. So that project will be starting probably the first, first week in July, like, right after Fourth of July. Um, it will impact the landing, um, but we're only thinking a one to two day closure, maybe at the most three times during the summer, and there'll be forty-eight hours notice of any type of closure. And what we're going to be doing down there is the actual landing's going to be lowered by about two to three feet. Um, there's going to be a new bulkhead put in, and it's going to be interlocking, um, stone. But it's not like the typical, it's not like the pavers, the interlocking stone that you buy at Lowe's. It's the good stuff. Um, and we expect it higher, um, to hold up, but it's not like the interlocking that you see, you know, like a retaining wall typically.
So the, when will, uh, when will the float be in? I have a friend who wants to know.
I'm going to say not until after the project's complete.
Yeah, and that will, when do you anticipate?
And it's going to be a new float.
You, what do you, when do you anticipate that?
Uh, depending on when they start, end of August, like, but I would say the end of August, beginning of September.
Well, that's when the water warms up, so.
Grand opening, party.
Sure. So, I just want to get through the project. I just want to get through the project. Um, so, you know, it's our, it's our first ship grant, so it, it, and definitely my first, uh, ship grant in Maine. So it's, it's definitely a little bit different, so we're gonna, we're gonna work through that. Um, but those, that's, I, I think that's exciting, and, you know, the ramp will be new. Um, so I, I, I think those are exciting things, um, to happen. Um, I should mention with the flags too, that we do intend, um, the flag, uh, flags for Walderboro to put them on Route One, and we've gotten requests to extend them down Friendship Street, so there are, people are still taking donations for that. Um, we have the Memorial Day Parade coming up. Um, I have a meeting with the Memorial, Memorial Day Committee, uh, Parade Committee tomorrow. Um, and I think that, um, some of the other exciting things that are happening, um, that are just townwide, will have an effect on the, um, the downtown area. We have Bill Naye Power back as our planner. Um, we've put in for, he really is doing a good job. We did put in for an Opportunity Zone Grant, uh, well, designation is Opportunity Zone. Uh, no one in Lincoln County got it. Um, there was thirty-two communities, none of them were in Lincoln County. Um, so that was a little depressing, but, um, also that affects the downtown and I will actually let Select Simmons, Selectman Simmons talk about this, but, um, the river, um, has some good news that, if you'd like to share that with everyone.
Last Wednesday, we had a meeting with, uh, the Washington, uh, Select Board, and I've been working on trying to get what we used to have back in the river as harvesting our wives out of the river. And they are excited to, to do it. They are willing to partner with us. Um, Sam Chapman is involved, uh, Ted Moley is involved. They're, they're really excited about it. They, a lot of people have kind of lost interest. They haven't had the money to do the things that they, that needs to be done. Julie stepped up and said that we have to do a, um, uh, what do you, what do you call it?
No, no.
No, it's, uh, a grant for, for two town, for multiple municipalities.
Share grant.
Share, a shared services grant, which increases the amount of money that we can get.
Most grants that we have, deal with these type of things, they won't look at anything less than a hundred thousand dollars. So as a single community, you're not going to make that threshold. With multiple compute, communities, you can make that threshold. And they're very excited about it. They're going to send us a letter saying that they're interested in opening up Washington Pond, access to Washington Pond, which is another five hundred and fifty-some odd acres, I guess.
That's fantastic.
So, and hopefully in the near future, three, four, five years from now, maybe there'll be some our wives harvested out of the river. I don't know if anybody here was here when that used to happen, but I was.
I remember. Down by the bridge.
Yeah, and I was, and it's been gone.
Yeah, the smokehouse is gone, but.
She can get another one.
Yeah, but I was, I, you know, I, I've been here all my life, so I remember when they used to have a Stella Wives right at the bridge, no street bridge.
Did you also want to update them on the opening of the river, of the clamming plaques and the health of the river?
We just got, um, two of our areas back, um, where we've done so much water sampling and, uh, working with DEP, DMR and, and stuff, uh, we got two more areas back. Um, Tom Shore, that's been closed for five or six years, which is really good, good area for us. It's not even actually going to be part of the one-inch rainfall closure. Our one-inch rainfall closure on the upper end of the river has moved up another two hundred yards, which hasn't been open since two thousand eight. So it's been ten years ago that this area was open. We're going to get that back, so. The river's as clean as it's ever been, so, I mean, we've done a, done a tremendous job of taking care of the river in the last five years.
And how much of a, uh, uh, how much money do you get out of it? Two point, something.
Oh, last year was one point six, but the year before that was two million. The year before that was two point two million we took out of the river.
The clambers get.
The clambers.
Not after.
But because we're cleaning the river and keeping it up to date, it's the biggest money-making river in.
In the state. We're the number one in the state.
So that's quite an accomplishment for, for Walderboro.
And, and keeping it, a lot of towns are losing areas. We're maintaining or ex, or gaining areas. So, you know, it's, it's quite a, it's quite an undertaking, but we've had plenty of people that stepped up to the plate and helped, so.
Thank you.
So, I think that's all the good news and fun and li- liveliness that we have. Um, did you have any questions for me or the Select Board or?
I think there's one other question I had, and you had said that you would like to see more traffic down through downtown? Is that what you was talking about? Yep, yep, you had said, because Route One traffic would be diverted over that way.
Yes, yes.
So, so you'd like to see traffic moved, what if, I, I've been tossing this around and Ron, um, oh, excuse me, Ron, Ron Miller, and I had talked about possibly turning Old Route One into a business Route One and possibly get traffic to go that way, but it's never gone anywhere. I don't think it will go anywhere, but.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And, you know, is, there's a housing development up on top of the hill that's never, never had a house in it. There's a sign up there that says lots for sale. It's never, it's, it's six or eight lots out there, I believe, that goes out in behind. Maybe turn that into an, like, a small industrial park or something that's just off Route One. I mean, that would increase traffic possibly down through that area. Some of the people up there may not like it, but.
Sawdust Hill Industrial Park?
Could be, yeah.
Well, to go along with that, when I drive from Darmiscotta Inn, that entrance on Old Route One off of Route One, could use some spiffing up.
Well, and I think the garden club started that last year.
Well, they, they didn't, they did a little further up, but just when you turn, I was looking at that the other day and thinking, we can make this more welcoming, more attractive, and just more welcoming to drive down there.
Amanda, I'm sorry, she's, she can't be here tonight, but, uh, when she has talked about the, the way the road runs, I know that's a huge project, but if, if, if it ever comes to that, the, the way you turn onto and off of Route One at the top of the hill is kind of dicey.
It's a great motorcycle curve.
Sorry?
It's a great motorcycle curve.
Yeah, well, it used to be, before the Farkins, it used to, you can see the line, it was straight. And then they changed it to where you took more of a right turn rather than just the fork. So it has been, it, it was changed.
Been modified.
Changed back, okay. All right, I'm not going to get involved with that.
I think up at the top up there, uh, where you, you were talking about how it really looks ratty, it really looks ratty.
It could be more welcoming.
It's, uh, the, the town, the highway department has paved the top of that island.
Yeah.
So the garden club really can't do anything with that.
Pots, they're doing pots at Union. That, that's the same thing on Union, and they are putting, and they did last year the big barrels that, that made a, that made a huge difference. Yeah, I don't think it's an expensive job, but no.
Seth?
I, I just wanted to add, uh, talking about signage coming into town from the three main roads off of Route One. Uh, the WBA, uh, has just finished their pamphlet, and we're about to send it out to, um, state, uh, rest ops and things like that with all, lots of small businesses, uh, advertising unit. And many of us, including the pamphlet itself, called, referred to the ordinance name for the village, which is Historic Village District. And we put that, you know, this lo, is located right in the Historic Village District. It'd be really nice, thinking about commercializing the, Old Route One, to use that on those three entrances. You know, maybe get a state, uh, historical sign saying Historic Walderboro Village District, because that's what it is. And it makes you think about this, go there, uh, one would hope, anyway, generating more traffic.
What he said.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time and say that.
We try. There are things going on, and sometimes I think maybe I need to do a little bit better job of communicating that. It's just that sometimes you get busy doing and not shouting from the rooftops, so.
We know that.
You know, and if we don't, you know, if people aren't coming to hear what we're doing, then it's hard. And then sometimes I just think it's just day to day, and I don't realize, like, to you guys, it might be quite special, whereas to me, it's just like part of my job, so, um, just, anytime you have questions, feel free to call me or come, stop in and see me. I always prefer a visit than a phone call, so.
Do you have hours here or?
I have hours, eight-thirty to four-thirty, unless I am out doing something or babysitting my grandson, I am here. I am always here. I think they would, I think everybody here would vouch, I'm here.
She's always here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Bye. Have a great night.
Hey, you too.
Oh, we can recess for eight minutes, I guess.
Yep. Recession.
Want me to shut that off or?
Do you want me to shut it off?
Yeah, you have to.
I was hoping Carol and Bill would come sit up front.
Thank you so much for your communicating with us today. Um, I sent you back an email saying, um, I went on Chrissy Ann's website. I saw her stuff. Do you like that idea?
Yeah.
She's got fabulous stuff.
She does, oh, yeah.
So I'll pick a bunch of them and send them off too.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, thank you.
But let's do this first thing.
And then the only other thing we have to change is we have to put the warrant.
Got it.
Thank you.
Do you listen?